All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the May 20th, 2024 Crestille City Council meeting to order. If everyone will please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson. Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin. Mark Sapiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kubal.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, you have before you the minutes from the city council meeting held on May 6, 2024. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on May 6, 2024. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Thank you.
You have before you the minutes of the work session held on Monday, May, or Wednesday, May 8, 2024. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Dyke for the approval of the work session minutes of May 8, 2024. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Abstain.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
And Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You have before you the minutes of the work session held on May 13, 2024. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Sapiti for the approval of the work session minutes of May 13, 2024. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And you have before you the minutes of the work session held on May 14, 2024. Motion would be in order?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the approval of the minutes of the work session of May 14, 2024. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Abstain.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
And Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney. Our attorney tonight, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no agenda items, but will entertain any questions.
Any questions of city attorney? Thanks, Mike. Moving on to our interim city administrator, Tony Craft. Good evening, Tony.
Hi, email, Mike.
Sorry about that. Email out my report on Friday. Any questions? Glad to hear your opinion.
Any questions of city administrator? All right, thank you, Tony. Public Works, our director of Public Works, Mike Ullitz. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Good evening. The first item on there is I'm asking for an ordinance to amend the fiscal year '24-25 budget. And the ordinance is amended to handle the repairs at the iron filter for wells number nine and 12 in an amount not to exceed $386,386. This would come from the fund balance to be transferred to the Water and Sewer Capital Fund for well maintenance budgets. I'm asking this ordinance be approved.
So moved, it's presented.
Could I ask, can I interject one thing? I would recommend that the word "officer" be taken out of the heading. So we're not amending our budget officer ordinance. It's just we're amending our budget ordinance. I just don't want any confusion that we're changing the duties of our budget officer. So that would be my only recommendation for a change on the ordinance.
So moved with the change.
And second.
Okay, we have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an ordinance supplementing the budget officer ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2024 and ending April 30, 2025 for the city of Crestille, Will County, Illinois. This is for the emergency repair work to wells number nine and number 12. Questions or comments?
Except it's not budget officer, it's just budget ordinance.
Budget ordinance, my fault. Questions or comments?
I have a quick question for the Treasury Office. How this will be impacted for next year's budget?
It goes up by $386,000.
So will be, so that mean they can do, they have to do less projects the following year?
No.
No?
You've added to it and providing funds from surplus.
Okay, thank you.
Or reserves, I should say.
Roll call, Chris.
I had a question for Mike regarding the iron filter. Is this type of damage that we're seeing now something that would be expected for its age, for example, or is it more, is it something that could have been prevented by through some other form of maintenance along the way?
They, these, these iron filters, these vessels, so to speak, in these wells have about a 15 to 20-year lifespan. This particular vessel probably has passed that 20-year lifespan, so we've been lucky. Is there something you could do? Not really. It's just, I mean, the nature of the chemicals that we're putting in there and to filter out this and that, and it's just the nature of the beast.
Okay. Would this compromise, we'll say, in the system have anything to do with the large amounts of rusty water that have been reported late, more recently?
The rusty water was from, and once again, I apologize to the mayor and city council and the public that had to endure that. The rusty water was from, we were doing some work at the Gaylord Water Tank, Gaylord and Waterford, I think.
Yeah.
We emptied the water tank to do some maintenance work. We were flushing that out and cleaning that out, and then, so we emptied all the water. When we were putting it back in, it stirred up. It kind of created a vacuum and it stirred up some of the water mains around there and created that issue.
Yeah, you told me that when I contacted you directly, and I appreciate that. I was just, I could see that for that, that area there, but there's just been other reports in other parts of the city that are far away from that Gaylord location.
Yeah, we really need to, and I really wanted to do a full citywide flushing of the hydrants. I mean, the reason why we're having some of these issues is I don't think we flushed hydrants for a couple of years, I'm thinking. And I really wanted to do that. We've had issues unfortunately with our iron filter at well 11 and then now nine and 12, and some of these wells are going to be taken out of service. It's going to put us into the summertime. I don't know if we want to be doing that in the summertime of the peak water usage hours, but I think if we could get, maybe in the fall, we could get some, do a full-scale citywide hydrant flushing. That would help out with some of the issues we're having, and those are probably why we're having them, because we have not done some flushing to kind of get some of this stuff out of the system.
But Mike, what we have to wait till fall, because I brought this to you when you first came in here, that we haven't done any fire hydrant flushing, and it's something that we need to do because the amount of phone calls and text messages and private messages is getting above and beyond. And when we tell the resident, you have to flush, you run your water for 10, 15 minutes, the comments that we're getting right now, well, who's going to pay for my water bill? You know, when we keep asking the resident, you run the water for 15 minutes, and you know water is expensive, and now in the summer, a lot more people are going to use water. So how do I explain that to them?
Well, like I, we wanted to do it. I wanted to do it in April, but these wells are out right now, and if I start flushing stuff, we're going to have problems with pressure throughout the city and other areas if I start flushing these hydrants right now. That's why I kind of want to wait until these things are repaired, these two iron filters, these two vessels are repaired so we can get these wells back in service. Once we get these wells back in service, like I said, now we're going to be in the summertime. I mean, we can definitely do it in the summertime, but once again, we're going to have pressure issues because of the usages of water in the summertime. So I wanted to do it in the spring. We just, unfortunately, because of these problems we had with these wells, these iron filters, we weren't able to do it in the spring. Again, it would cause a lot of pressure problems and a lot more problems than we have. So going forward, we'd like to possibly do it, like I said, if it's less usage in the fall, when we've got all these wells back online, and then we can get a full citywide hydrant flushing campaign.
Do we know if those wells are going to be ready by fall?
We sure hope so.
Don't give me that, because the resident can accept that. Can we put something on the website or on the Facebook to explain to them?
Sure.
So this way it comes from the water department, not from a council person?
Yeah.
So it can get more information?
No problem.
That would be nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, back to the waiting till fall to do any hydrant flushing, hydrant flushing. I understand, you know, summer's a high usage time. Has there been consideration? Because we did have done in the past where we flushed hydrants at night when the usage is, most people are not using a lot of water at overnight, and, you know, residents wouldn't even see or know that it was being done because they didn't see them most of the time.
We definitely can, and it probably has been done in the past. It's not very safe for our guys to be doing the hydrant flushing at night, but it's something we can look into as a possible alternative. The other thing we want to keep in mind is, are we refurbishing our water tanks at night when the demand is low and we're trying to get our water volume back up? That's a couple of things we'll need to look at, but that's definitely one possibility.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, Mike, things get old and they just break.
That's unfortunate, yes.
People, things.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries ordinance 1985.
I believe the next item is the emergency purchase of two raw sewage pumps for the West Side Treatment Plant. We spoke about this in our work session last week. Once again, we have, four are required to keep the pump, or to keep the plant running on a daily basis. Two of them are out. We've looking to do an emergency purchase of the two ones that went out. One, again, we thought perhaps might have been hit by lightning, and if it has, it's something that we could possibly get reimbursed for. We could look into that. But we won't know until we take it out and get a good look at it. So we're asking for an emergency purchase of the two raw sewage pumps in the amount of $42,381.48.
So moved, it's presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Gazal to approve the emergency purchase of two raw sewage pumps for the West Treatment Plant in the amount of $42,381.48. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And my final item is getting back to what the ordinance was for, is wells nine and 12, the iron filter emergency repair work. This is to approve the contract to have them begin this as soon as possible for not, not to exceed cost of $386,386. And once again, this is the United Service Group that will be doing this work.
So moved, it's presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Jefferson to approve the agreement with USG Water for Wells number nine and number 12. Iron filter emergency repair working amount not to exceed $386,386. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
And Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, but I'll entertain any further questions that anyone has.
Any questions at Public Works?
Yes, I have one. I was wondering if you could look into the truck signs we have on Raynor Avenue, whether they need to be larger, or if maybe we could get those yellow flashing lights around it. I've seen that elsewhere. Because we're still getting trucks driving down Raynor Avenue from both directions going north and south. So if you could do something for that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Absolutely. You're welcome.
I have one more question or request. I don't know how you want to take it. Usually around this time, due to the heat, we start announcing about water use. We have an ordinance about adding homes. And usually we also put some signage on some of the streets. Can we look into that and announce it to the resident?
Add even watering days.
Right. I'll look into that ordinance. I assume it's a time as well, certain time in the morning, certain time in the evening, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our city engineer, Ron Wedeman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. First item I have on the agenda tonight, I'm looking for a motion to award the contract to Austin Tyler Construction Incorporated for the Circle and Green Water Main Replacement and Road Reconstruction Improvement in the amount of $1,582,230.63.
So moved. Second.
Who made the motion?
Me.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the award the contract to Austin Tyler Construction for the Circle and Green Street Water Main Replacement and Road Reconstruction Improvement in the amount of $1,582,230.63. Questions or comments?
Just one question for you, Ron. I noticed that the summary sheet, the cost shows 1.7, and we budgeted 2.6. Is that the budgeted amount? Is that for that full project? Did it come?
Correct.
It came in that much lower?
Yep, about $780,000 less.
Yep. Great, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is getting a motion to approve a resolution approving an agreement for the Circle and Green Street Water Replacement and Road Reconstruction Improvement by and between the city of Crestille, Will County, Illinois, and V3 Companies of Illinois LTD for an amount of $118,207.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for a resolution approving a construction engineering agreement for Circle and Green Street Water Main Replacement and Road Reconstruction Improvement by and between the city of Crestille, Will County, Illinois, and V3 Companies of Illinois LTD. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries resolution number 1231.
The next item on the agenda is looking for a motion to approve a resolution approving an agreement for a facility condition assessment survey and asset condition assessment report for wells 1, 4, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and the East wastewater treatment plant by and between the city of Crestille, Will County, Illinois, Wilmet Hoffman Associates Limited for an amount of $99,600.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Overland for a resolution approving an agreement for facility condition assessment survey and asset condition assessment reports for wells 1, 4, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12, and East wastewater treatment plant by and between the city of Crestille, Will County, Illinois, and Willet Hoffman Associates for an amount of $99,600. All these, all of these items for engineer and public works have been discussed at the work sessions that we had. Any questions or comments?
I do have one question.
Yeah.
On the last page, attachment B, where it says use of documents, that last paragraph. I just want to make sure that that doesn't mean that we can't utilize stuff that was prepared for us.
Attachment B?
Yeah, it was the last page.
And which one?
85, it says, the little box.
No, I'm on that, but which, which one of the items?
The use of documents, documents prepared by the engineer.
Yep. No, we can use, we can use all the PDF documents that are provided out of this report. What we won't own is the actual DJI or computer files. They own that.
Prepared by the engineer, answered service three solely with respect to the project.
It just would seem to me if we were paying for something, and we're paying the engineer, we're paying to get something done, we should have rights to the documents.
We have rights to the PDFs. They're going to give us a set of PDFs, and we can do whatever we want with those documents.
This primarily refers to if they are doing engineered drawings, they want to retain the copyright, if they do, if they have copyright, but they are not preparing any engineering documents in this case. They're doing a facility and site assessment for us that will be our document.
Oh, yeah, that's true. I apologize. You're right.
They're doing a report.
Because it's in here. I'm learned. We ask the questions ahead of time now. We don't ask afterwards. We ask before. Thank you.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're right. So there will be no copyright for anything that they prepare, since it's just going to be reports that they will generate for us in this case.
I read all the sign prints, sir.
That's okay.
Roll, roll call, Chris.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries resolution 1232.
The next item, I'm looking for a motion to approve a resolution approving an agreement for design and related services for the east and western receiving stations for the Grand Prairie Water Commission delivery points by and between the city of Crestille, Will County, Illinois, and Strand Associates, Inc., for an not to exceed amount of $533,500.
So moved, that's presented.
And again.
Second.
And again, this was discussed at the last workshop.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Gazal to approve a resolution approving design and related services for the eastern and western receiving sites at Grand Prairie Water Commission delivery points by and between the city of Crestille, Will County, Illinois, and Strand and Associates Incorporated. Questions or comments to the motion? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries resolution 1233.
And the last item I have on the agenda is approve a resolution approving the mayor to execute correspondence to the Will County Department of Transportation requesting a relocation of existing traffic signals on the Weber Road. the relocation of existing traffic signals on the Weber Road at Ryan to Weber Road at McGilvery Drive, and approval of the conditions of the variance for the relocation.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Alder Woman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute correspondence to the Will County Department of Transportation, requesting the relocation of existing traffic signals on Weber Road at Ryan Drive to Weber Road and McGilvery Drive, and approval of the conditions of a variance for the relocation. Questions or comments?
I have a comment. This has been the making for over twelve years now. And I remember when you first came here, I told you about it. You contacted the county, which as everyone else have done, and they told you no, and they refused to take the no for an answer. But you believed in me, and I kept pushing, and you kept pushing back, and you finally made it work. I want to appreciate everything that you've done for this. I know it's a long term before we get to it by the time we get the money, but I know the residents of Crest Hill will appreciate it for their safety, since we have three fidelity so far there. And let's hope the city will make this goal happen for the safety of everyone. But thank you.
You're very welcome.
For continuing on fighting for us.
Will do. I just wanted to make one comment, though. More for the clerk. Exhibit A, only pages one and two go to the county. Three and four, please delete. Somehow they got attached. They don't need to go with the letter. I don't know how it happened, but it happened.
So page one oh seven, one oh eight only?
Yeah, it's just, I don't, I don't have open the same file you do, but it's the one that starts on the top, questionnaire. Do you have a basement? Those, that was attached to another letter somehow.
Not the resolution.
I was wondering what that was all about.
So those two pages.
I do have a basement.
Just one and two, go. That was for the Wilcox project, so.
Oh, yeah.
That was a survey for the Wilcox project, so.
Roll call, Chris.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution one, two, three, four.
And that's all I have on the agenda, unless anybody has any, any questions or comments.
Any questions of city engineer?
Thanks for all your hard work, sir.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Ron. Moving on to community development, our community development director, Ron Metzner. But I would ask that the first agenda item, number thirteen, I would ask that we table that for right now, and we will need to.
We're not table, and you can't table.
To an executive session for two C six.
You can't table it.
Don't table, just skip it.
Just skip it?
Yeah.
Okay. I would ask for a motion to go into executive session then?
You could, you could.
You can skip it. You can table it. Skip it in the order, but you can't table.
I thought we were going to go into executive session first.
Take item fourteen. The owners are here, Midwest.
Okay.
And then we go back to thirteen.
All right, I will turn it over to our interim, uh, community and economic development director, Ron Metzner.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. Thank you. Just a point of quick clarification, hopefully to avoid any additional confusion. Pages one seventeen and one eighteen in the agenda packet materials they have before you were inadvertently included. They really don't apply to this particular agenda item, so I apologize for those getting copied and distributed, so hopefully they didn't cause too much confusion. So what we're seeking tonight is council motion to approve an ordinance granting a special use permit with respect to certain real property located within the corporate boundaries of Crest Hill. It's an application of Gas and Wash and RR Crest Hill LLC. At the May ninth Plan Commission meeting, the Plan Commission reviewed this request and unanimously recommended approval of it, subject to a number of conditions. The recommendation would allow, or would include the city approving a new special use permit for a PUD in the B-three district that would essentially allow the existing temporary driveway improvements that were installed west of the Gas and Wash gas station at the northwest corner of Division and Weber Road along Division Street to be converted into semi-permanent improvements for an indefinite interim basis. And when I say that, they will be upgraded if approved, and they will look like permanent improvements, but the structure of the PUD approval that the Plan Commission recommended approval of, and staff is in support of, considers those existing improvements, not existing, but the upgraded version of those existing improvements, something that would be in place in an interim basis until the rest of the Hydner property, all the farm field back behind the commercial areas that include Gas and Wash and the commercial outlots to the north of Gas and Wash along Weber Road, the balance of the farm field is developed. Once the developer for that, the balance of that property is identified, they understand what kind of development will happen on that project or on that property, they will come back to the city, and they'll need a PUD approval for that. And it's likely that that PUD approval will trigger the need to modify the temporary interim improvements that we're talking about tonight. So essentially, these interim improvements, driveway improvements would be upgraded and replace the need to construct the previously approved permanent driveways on Division Street for the Gas and Wash project. That included, close to the intersection of Weber Road and Division Street, a right-in, right-out driveway. That's going to be eliminated. And then just to the west of that, there was a three-quarter access improvement that was proposed, and that one also be eliminated. The driveway improvements that are in place today and are very temporary provide for a full access onto Division Street, because it's far enough away from Weber Road that it's outside of the turn lane, left-hand turn lane on Division Street to head south or north on Weber Road. From the staff perspective, this is a positive improvement. It is different than what was originally envisioned, and it's being dictated or driven to a large extent by the relatively shallow depth of the large diameter high-pressure petroleum pipeline along that side of Division Street, which is a lot shallower than what everybody had anticipated when the Gas and Wash project was being designed. But ultimately, we feel that this improvement is a better place for the driveway. It will require ultimately some kind of modification, most likely, when the balance of the property, the farm field, is developed. So with that, I'd be happy to try to address any questions you have about this particular request. There is a representative of Gas and Wash here tonight to be able to provide their perspective on it, and there's also a representative of the Hydner property, which is the balance of the farm field that you'll see out there right now here tonight, to be able to talk to, about their perspective on this improvement.
I had a question for a city engineer. Ron, how do you feel about this as far as impact of traffic or?
Again, this location is much more acceptable than the previous. It will allow the same amount of storage for left-moving trucks, which was one of the issues that we had when I first got here. We increased that storage. This will maintain that storage that we currently have by moving the intersection farther away from the intersection. And then there's some interim improvements that Ron has in his report that they need to do to make this more of a permanent entrance, and I am good with all of those, so.
Thank you.
Excuse me. This is, you said this would be a temporary entrance until the development happens on a vacant land adjacent to it? And at that time, where will we move the entrance? Will it go back to the original spot?
Most likely not. Generally going to probably end up in the same location, but the configuration of that driveway entrance would have to be modified to provide appropriate, safe, and efficient access, not only to the Gas and Wash and commercial area of the project, but also to the balance of the development that's going to happen to the north on that property. So that driveway is going to serve more than the commercial area. It's going to serve the commercial area plus the balance of the property that's undeveloped right now.
Okay, thank you.
I asked this question on Monday, and I just, I just want clarification. I agree that this full access interchange is farther west and safer for all, but where are we at with the actual right turn on Weber Road onto Division?
I can answer that.
Okay.
That is still permitted by the county, and it is going to be built, built exactly as the way the project is, was approved of the PUD, which is going to widen that radius and have a little bit of wide, you know, transition back on Division. That is still part of this. It's not changing. You know, when it's going to actually be constructed, maybe Gas and Wash can touch a little bit on that, but in my preliminary conversations with them, they're kind of waiting for this approval, so they knew exactly what was approved to move ahead and schedule it. I don't know if you guys add any more into that than?
I guess I'm just concerned, because the, on page one forty-three is the actual new plan of what it's going to look like with the other entrances and exits, you know, taken out, but it still doesn't show that lane, actually, on Weber Road.
All right. I mean, I was provided a document last week, same document showing the removal of the driveways, and it showed the widening, so let me see what we're looking at here. What page is it in your packet?
One hundred and forty-three.
Hundred and forty-three?
It's the big flat.
Give me one second. That is the new widened radius. They're not showing any of the existing. It's all proposed. So that's already showing the widening around the quarter. You're just not seeing any existing pavement to reference it from. If you take a look, there's a stop bar there on Weber. That's all the additional new widening for that right-hand turn.
Is it going to, is it going to be a dedicated right-hand turn lane? Or is it just wide?
On Weber, yes. 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 From the right-in, right-out, going to Division would be a single dedicated right-hand turn.
Because you can clearly see on the map, the left-hand turn going eastbound on Division Street, but I don't know why it's not earmarked to see the westbound lane.
There's just not, I mean, the stridings are not there, but the existing widening went, goes right to the end of the stop bar. So that is the proposed widening on the edge. And like I said, I did confirm that last week with Gas and Wash. Actually sent an exhibit out to Ron of what was being proposed by Gas and Wash. I think I also forwarded on to the mayor, too, for his information.
Well, we have Gas and Wash, and he can answer that question?
Yeah.
Well, hang on. Are there any more, are there any more questions from city council for staff? Okay, gentlemen.
So is that yes, for the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hang on, Alex. Any other questions for Alex from council? Okay, thanks, Alex. Anything from the Hydner representative? No?
If there's any questions, you're answered.
Any questions?
That's for the adjacent property, right? The, to the Gas and Wash?
Yeah.
No, nothing at this time.
Okay, any last questions from city council?
Do we know when the estimated completion of this project? Ron?
Of the widening for Weber?
Ron, Ron.
The widening for Weber or all of the work?
All of the work.
Well, they still have to submit plans for the, engineering plans still need to be submitted for all the items that have not been addressed yet. We've not having a full civil set with all the proposed lighting, final lighting. There's some, we'll get into it, but grades, curb and gutter. So that still has to go through and get engineering approval. The widening that Nate is talking about can happen as soon as they get it scheduled. So I'm not sure. I think the county has some dates on that.
So it will be this year?
It, it should, it should be this year, and the only restriction is if they don't get us plans and get us plans, so.
I think, I think it's safe to say that they're anxious to get, get the approval so they can finalize the design and get it done. I think from a business perspective, the, the really temporary improvements that are out there really aren't conducive to invite consumer traffic.
Yep. It's, you know, the way that we think about it, we have about fifty percent of the volume. We hope to have, because we have really only access on Weber right now, to Ron's point. So we're excited. I think it's going to be a better experience for our customers. That ground road is less than ideal, but anyways, you're on it already. So we're anxious to do a kind of more permanent, we want to come forward, totally prove the paving for that in the years. We want to do it the right way, not knowing when the rest of the development would be approved and finalized, so we want a more long-term solution.
Well, it's kind of hard to wash the car and then go that way.
Sorry.
It's just a joke. I said it's kind of hard to wash the car and then go over the gravel again.
You've got to go back out.
I know, all the way.
But yeah, so hopefully that'll solve that problem. Or if Ron gets the engineering finalized, get a permit, and then construction should take more than three weeks at most, once we get the permit, proceed.
I think that the new permanent entrance and exit was going to be a lot safer. It's going to be farther from Weber Road, which will cause a lot less problems. I think that will be a bigger, a big improvement at that for Gas and Wash.
Yeah, unfortunately, no one accounted for the idea. That was all Ron's idea, so.
Once again, good job, Ron.
Okay. Thanks, Alex. Okay, so I would ask if anybody would like to speak for or against the request of Gas and Wash for a special use for planned unit development and major PUD changes for the northwest corner of Weber Road and Division Street, Crest Hill, Illinois, to include the point eight, eighty-four acres immediately adjacent to the west, additional property be utilized for permanent driveway improvements for the existing Gas and Wash project. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. Second request, anyone would like to speak for or against the request of Gas and Wash for a special use planned unit development at the northwest corner of Weber Road and Division Street, and the point eighty-four acres immediately adjacent to the west, the additional property be utilized for permanent driveway improvements for the existing Gas and Wash project. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. Stu?
Not on Division, only on, they'll have a stop sign on the access road in Division, no.
There will be streetlights there, though, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
At this point, it's not being required, no.
That's why the representative of Hydner is here.
Yep.
Really good point.
Yep.
Your name for the record, sir?
Troy, I'm from Hydner Properties. There'll be no negative impact for me with the property that this access point, I would kind of bits in with some of the site planning efforts that are already taking place. So we're planning it all together, and I say that before, we still have.
kind of fits in with some of the site planning efforts that are already taking place, so we're, we're planning it all together and, uh, I say before, we still have to imagine the city for any and all approvals associated with removing the property being counted. So, we're looking forward to it and looking forward to getting the Gas and Wash access there as well.
Okay, thanks Troy. All right, third request, anybody would like to address city council? Speak for or against special use planned undev, planned unit development of Gas and Wash at the northwest corner of Weber Road and Division Street? And the point eighty-four acres immediately adjacent to the west for the additional property to be utilized for permanent driveway improvements for the existing Gas and Wash project. Let the record show that no one else has approached the podium. With that, you do have an approval from the plant commission and you also have before you city council and ordinance granting a special use permit with respect to certain real property located within the corporate boundaries of Crest Hill. The application of Gas and Wash, R R Crest Hill LLC. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Guzal. For the approval, questions or comments?
Mayor, I just want to put it on the record, one, one more comment. The, the original plan on page one hundred and forty-one shows that right turn lane. This new plan does not. Whether the width is there or not, it does not show it on the plan. I'm not sure why it couldn't be treated as a separate phase or something like that. I, I just, I'm fearful that we're not going to see that, that lane be put in. And it's too congested right now at that intersection. That traffic backs up all the way to Randage Road and, and then some through that intersection now. And I know there's temporary traffic signals, but it's, there needs to be an eastbound, um, lane onto Division Street. Or southbound on Weber, eastbound onto, uh, westbound onto Division Street. So I'm going to vote no until I see it on this actual plan.
Well, can we make that, uh, part of the, um, motion? Motion to make sure that it's be added, otherwise?
Well, I like to vote on plans that I see, like actually see it in the plans, like.
Well, if it's on record and the attorney is here, what do you think?
Right now, the motion is to approve this ordinance as written and it has a plan that, uh, Alderman Albert doesn't want to vote for, so.
I understand, but can we have it part of the motion that it has to be added, that can they, or can we give them an estimate date that they need to bring us that copy?
Does the document exist? Can it just be swapped out? I, I don't know. I mean, if they don't have the document.
There are numerous documents of record that show that the southbound line is incorporated into the original Gas and Wash design. What, what we're here tonight is talking about the new access point and leaving the original as designed Gas and Wash exactly as it's been approved by Weber County and the city. Those documents and site plans are beyond record. They've got a record for access to it. And the reason they're not shown on the site plan is that the purpose of the site plan is to show the new location, the access and not necessarily focusing on the intersection of Weber and Division, so it's just a finer whole site. There's, there's record plans out in the city, right, that could be shown, so.
And you're verifying that that intersection will be approved then?
Right, and, I mean, and even though it doesn't show the right turn arrow that Nate is looking for, it does show the widening. If you look at the right in, right out, the solid line that goes to a dotted line, that is the existing edge of pavement. The rest of it is all widened, brand-new pavement. That's what it is. It's a solid, it is a line that goes right in front of the right in, right out. It goes, is a solid line, then it turns to a dotted line. That is the existing edge of pavement. It's just not showing.
What, what page are you looking at?
Uh, one forty-three. I mean, it should have shown it like he mentioned, but the, the widening is shown.
I made my comments here.
Pardon me?
I made my comments.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the table. There's no further questions and answer for a roll call.
Yeah, right.
Joe Kubel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
No.
Motion carries ordinance one-nine-eight-six.
Okay, thank you gentlemen. Back to Ron.
Sorry about that. Other than the item that's in, going to be discussed in closed session, I don't have anything else formally on the agenda, but would be happy to address any questions you have regarding community development items.
I sent you, I forwarded you an email from a resident and I did not get any response. Did you receive it?
And when was that?
Few days ago.
I don't remember receiving it, but I will look back through my email and see. Do you know what day it was by chance?
Not off the top of my head, but.
Late last week?
He was very upset about the circumstances, so I wanted to get a response for him.
Yeah, what was the project?
It's involving a pool and a fence at his house.
Okay, yeah, I don't remember seeing that email, but I'll go back and look.
Great, thanks Ron. Uh, moving on to our police department, our police chief Ed Clark. Good evening Ed.
Evening mayor and council. I do not have any agenda items this evening. Uh, but I'd like to, to thank everybody for participating in the cop on the rooftop on Friday. We raised over three thousand dollars for Special Olympics. Uh, with this year, we did have the credit card machine, which helped a lot. People would always say, oh, I, I don't have any cash. I mean, well, you're in luck today, so. We caught a couple of them, but, uh, it worked out so well and, uh, I want to thank Public Works for helping us with setting things up. I know Chris was out there helping. Um, Lori Thrasher came in and, uh, and sat with us and, and helped. Uh, our records department came and helped, uh, at some point. Um, but, uh, everybody kind of pitched in and, uh, thank you for those of you who would come out when they could and donated and spent some time with us out there. But, uh, it's always a fun event and this one was just as fun. The weather was nice and I'm just very thankful we got that done. Uh, I will entertain any questions.
Who was in the donut?
Uh, about four different people had to wear the donut, yeah. The, the newest officers.
I do have to agree that credit card was a trick.
Yeah, it worked.
You got me two shirts.
Thank you.
Any questions of police chief?
Yeah, uh, chief, just wondering, is there any way you can, uh, have some squads on Raynor to kind of take a look for these semis that are going down Raynor Avenue?
Absolutely. In fact, I, just when I heard again, I, uh, I texted and, uh, we're going to set up a detailed on her.
Thank you. Okay, thanks Ed.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to the mayor's report, the agenda item that I have is a proclamation for Public Works Week in the city of Crest Hill from May nineteenth to May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, you have a copy of the proclamation before you. We'll begin with the reading of the proclamation, uh, with Alderman Dyke.
Thank you mayor. Proclamation, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Crest Hill and?
Whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector. Who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems. Public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens and?
Whereas it is in the public interest of citizens, civic leaders and childrens in the city of Crest Hill to gain a knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works program in their respective communities and where?
Whereas the year twenty twenty-four marks the sixty-fourth annual National Public Works Week. Sponsored by the American Public Works Association.
Now, now therefore, I Raymond R. Solomon, by the virtue of the powers vested in me as the mayor of the city of Crest Hill, along with the members of the city council, do hereby designate and proclaim this week of May nineteenth, twenty twenty-four through May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, as National Public Works Week in the city of Crest Hill, Illinois.
I urge all citizens to recognize the contribution which Public Works employees make to protecting our health, safety, comfort and quality of life.
In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the corporate seal of the city of Crest Hill this twentieth day of May twenty twenty-four, Raymond R. Solomon.
So moved as presented.
Second. We have motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Dyke for the approval of the proclamation. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
And Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, just a comment. Uh, please pass along our congratulations to all the members of Public Works. I know sometimes it's a thankless job, but they are out there in all types of weather, all hours of the day, just like our police department. So, uh, please pass along our gratitude to each and every one of them for the job they do, uh, to improve the quality of life for the city of Crest Hill. And I know that with the sometimes bad winters that we have and then all the potholes and everything else, it's, uh, it is, it's always trying to catch up type of job, so just pass along our gratitude and thanks.
Thank you, well done.
Any other comments from council?
Maybe you could sing them a tune.
Maybe?
Okay, the only other thing I have is Memorial Day, two thousand twenty-seven, uh, two thousand twenty-four. It's going to be held on Monday, May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, right outside here in our memorial garden. Our guest speaker this year is Ms. Denise Carson. She is a, uh, uh, Army Vietnam veteran. Uh, who is a Crest Hill resident also, and she is in the ambassador for honor and remember. Uh, it is the Gold Star Mothers that she is in charge of for the state of Illinois. So, uh, we will have the Frankfurt Brass Band here. They will start at pre-concert at one forty P M. The event will start at two o'clock P M. Uh, it'll be a very solemn occasion where we honor all those individuals that have passed away. And we will also honor our two slain police officers who were killed in the line of duty. So we ask if you please join us on that day in case of inclement weather, which that is the forecast for right now. We will move everything inside into these chambers here and we will hold the ceremony inside. So rain or shine, the program will go on. It'll last about one hour and there will be some light refreshments after, um, after the ceremony for everyone, so please join us if you can. With that, I'll take any questions anyone may have.
I have that question. Did you get any resumes yet for, um, Alderman Verche's?
I have.
And what is the next process?
The next process is I have sixty days from Alderman Verche's passing to make a recommendation to city council.
Oh, do we get to see resumes or you just, your choice to just pick who you, who you want?
Uh, I believe it's my choice, is it not, to our city attorney?
Yes, it's, uh, the mayor's appointment within sixty days.
I understand, but do we have, can we view who applied or we're not allowed to know? Is it secret?
I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know that that's a legal question. Yeah, I think the mayor can share it if he so desires. I could look to see whether there's, there's a legal requirement, but there's nothing in the statute that says that he has to share resumes. It doesn't even say that he has to take resumes. Says that he must appoint.
But also doesn't state that he cannot share, that he, that he could not share them.
It does not, no.
That's all, just a simple question.
Okay, moving on to our city clerk, Christine Verche Hall.
Thank you, I have nothing to report tonight.
Any questions of city clerk?
I just feel like asking Chris a lot of questions.
All right, thanks Chris. City treasurer, treasurer Glenn Conklin. Good evening Glenn.
Good evening mayor and council. I seek your approval on our list of bills issued through May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. An amount of four hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents.
So moved as presented.
Second. We have motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Dyke for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you all. The next item we'll address after executive session. Um, and then the last item, uh, doesn't require any action, but I'd like to report our regular overtime pay, regular and overtime payroll from April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four through May fifth of two thousand twenty-four and the amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. That's all I got till we come back from executive session and on entertain any questions.
Any question, questions of the treasurer?
No, but I would just like to comment about, uh, the overtimes and I think I talked to a couple of department heads about this. Can we make sure we start, uh, obviously not the police because the police is totally different, but the other departments. Can we make sure before they, um, start putting overtime that it gets approval by a supervisor? That will not be just an open thing, that they can just add their overtime as they feel like it, um, Tony?
Yes, yes, well, uh, I'll dress in my staffing tomorrow.
Thank you.
Isn't it, isn't it approved now? Isn't that policy?
They know. A lot of department, they just put their own hours.
They're supposed to get it approved.
They're supposed to get it through, but they don't.
If it's written that it should be done, why isn't it?
Well, it's not.
That's a good question.
Okay, any other questions?
Sorry, thank you.
That wasn't a question for me, but I'm good. Thank you.
Well, because you're talking about payroll, I mean about,
Yeah.
about overtime, so I just want to make sure for the record.
All right, thanks Glenn. Unfinished business? We have nothing, anybody? New business? Committee liaison reports, anybody?
I would like to reiterate that the annual Ladice Memorial Service will be held Sunday, June ninth at eleven A M. at Ladice Memorial Park. If, uh, we get rained out like last year, we'll move it over here to city hall like we did. But, um, hopefully we'll get a big crowd for this very, very, very solemn occasion. I mean, people need to understand what this represents in our city, so please come out and join us. Seven o'clock, Sunday, June ninth.
City council comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? Anyone want to go first? We'll begin with Alderman Kubel tonight. Joe?
Nothing to add, mayor.
Alderman Albert?
Uh, nothing at this time here.
Alderman Zepidi?
Nothing tonight.
Alder Person Overland?
Well, I wish the city attorney and his wife a happy anniversary.
Alder Woman Guzal?
Nothing at this time here.
Alderman Jefferson?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Alderman Dyke?
Uh, yes, I'd just like to remember every, remind everybody about this weekend and Memorial Day, so if you're out and about or you see a veteran, make sure you thank them for their service. Also those others that serve communities, police, firemen, all of them put their lives on the line every day for us. So, doesn't matter, not just this weekend, but every day, we should make sure we thank them for what they do.
Okay, public comment. Anyone like to address city council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Stu?
Stu is with President Raymond Public Works Association. I guess in, uh, in, in continuing with the Public Works Week, I'd like to thank Public Works for, and, and, uh, Andrew O'Reilly for assisting. I noticed that our pond, retention pond is holding water way longer than ever before. Um, I reached out to Ron and he suggested possibly a, a plug or some blockage and, and Public Works went out and discovered it, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and the water's not going down regularly.
Okay, we do have a need for an executive session, Mike, do we not, for two C one and two C six?
That's correct.
Motion would be in order.
Second.
We have a motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an executive session for two C one and for two C six. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're going into executive session at eight oh three P M. All right, we're going into executive session at eight oh three P. M.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson to go back into regular session. Row call please.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal?
No.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
No.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then I believe the other item is...
Approve the non-union employee salary increases for fiscal year 2024 and '25.
As discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, to go back into regular session. Row call please.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
No.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal?
No.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
No.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, to go back into regular session. Row call please.
Claudia Gazzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
No.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal?
No.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
No.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal?
No.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
No.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal?
No.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
No.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then I believe the other item is...
Approve the non-union employee salary increases for fiscal year 2024 and '25.
As discussed in executive session.
Questions or comments? Row call.
Darrell Jefferson?
No.
Claudia Gazzal?
No.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
No.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then I believe the other item is...
Approve the non-union employee salary increases for fiscal year 2024 and '25.
As discussed in executive session.
Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Row call please.
Just one clarification. This is retro to May 1st. We didn't discuss that in executive session. Should've brought it up then. I know Dave's gonna ask that tomorrow.
To the motioner, to the second?
Well, yeah, it's retro.
Okay. I assumed it was.
Never assume.
May 1st, 2024.
May 1st, yeah.
Row call please.
Claudia Gazzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
No.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, any further business, Mike, before us?
No other action needed from executive.
Second.
Motion for an adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson. No questions or comments on the motion for the adjournment? Row call please.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
No.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, meeting is adjourned at 10 o'clock PM. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you.